All right, so I don't have a gavel, but I'm calling to order a full board meeting, a special board meeting of the Concord School Board on July 19th, 2021. Tonight, we're here to discuss specifically performance evaluation for the superintendent and the specific model that we choose to use and discuss any goals going forward for the next coming year that we would like to include in superintendent's job performance expectations. So with that, Ms. Cannon, will you take the role?
Absolutely. Ms. Hastings?
Here.
Ms. Higgins? Mr. Parkford?
I am here.
Mr. Richards?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Weinberg?
Here.
Ms. West?
Here.
And I am here.
Very good. This is the only thing on our agenda tonight. We will have a non-public session afterwards to discuss another item. However, I did want, I hope everybody got a chance to take a look at the two example evaluations. These are two recommended ones with regards to meeting what the School Board Association says. So I did want to just discuss one, them, to start out with. I just say, I tended to look at this one just because it was a little more in detail and I think the more modern of the two. But I'm more than willing to include or work after the second one. And I just wanted to, did everyone get a chance to take a look at these items? So I guess I'm looking for any sort of feedback on this evaluation, which is what we would each fill in. First off, I guess I should talk a little about procedure or intended procedure. The intended procedure is to have the superintendent self-evaluate using the same form to get her feedback and feeling on it. And then all of us would just contribute and rate this, and then we would compile them, probably come back together to make sure that we have a final thing to discuss any ones where we disagree on. And then review any goals we would like to have for the superintendent. So at this point, I guess I'd just like to get anybody's feedback on the actual evaluation itself, so. Yes, go ahead.
I'm looking at the one that says Concord School District SAU 8 at the top.
Yes.
And where it says purpose, I was a little confused because it says to measure the performance of the business administration?
Yes, this is just a, that's cut from pasted from somewhere else.
Okay, so we would take that out.
Good point. That would be the superintendent and then fill in to be evaluated by the board.
Okay.
Thank you. And then the method of evaluation, the one through five, does anybody have any issues with using that sort of a scoring system as outlined there?
I like that. I also like the narrative piece that the other one had so that you could add some notes.
To put in the two questions and comments or just a note section?
The strongest assets, and then it allowed for comments if you had some.
What could be improved? I like.
Yeah, I like that part of it.
No, I agree. I like, that's the part I liked about the other one that I would include. And we can include that on the end of each of our sections if everybody is so inclined.
I also liked that the other one had a option for being unable to evaluate.
Yes.
Oh, okay, a zero.
You know, I just think there are some things that I probably couldn't speak to on this very detailed list. And maybe others could, but I haven't been here as long, so. So if we included that, and I agree, I like the specific, you know, what are the, what can be improved, what's going really well in the sections.
Okay. And then, no, I agree with that. Does everybody agree that that's a good thing to add in there, that we do have the, in this area, what is the strongest asset or what specific area could be most improved, and then comments, and then just add that at each, at the end of each of these sections that we have? There is some small differences in the sections, but most of them are pretty close. The, is there anything that people would like to change? I guess let's start out with the educational objectives. Item one. Anybody have any comments on that particular area? About item two, school staff relationship?
I have a question about this, Jim.
Sure.
I've never been a part of this process, I guess, so I don't know how to answer some of these as a board because I don't really know if all personnel is treated fairly because they don't work here. Is there a chance to get input from employees or how do you do it, have you done it in the past?
Well, in the past, we've done it as the, and I can't speak extensively in the total past, but in as long as I've been, when I've been here and we've evaluated the superintendent, we haven't done a 360 type thing where we reach out to those who report to the superintendent. This has been graded basically on our focus and our interpretation and our interactions with the superintendent.
Okay.
You know, we don't get into absolute details. We don't get into the, you know, to the micromanagement of that. These more or less, they correspond to job description items that she's needed, but you can certainly make them broader or add goals or, you know, add things that you think are different from the SJD or, you know.
So basically, if we hadn't heard from staff that there were issues or, it's based on our perception of how it's going.
Based on your, our perception. We know we've asked her in the past about her staff evaluations and have talked about those. And this is just the general performance of her job that we would normally see, but we don't get into all the details. If you want to change anything, we can.
I just chose that one randomly. I just was thinking, like, I don't really know how often she's in the schools because I'm working during the day too, so I don't know how you get that in.
Yeah, Dave.
Yeah, just to carry that concept a little bit, it is true. It's hard for us to judge her in those roles. How, where would we get, have we been given enough information to do that? Or is this, or is this just a form that we use as sort of a template?
This is.
Knowing that she's being measured by these things, because it is hard. We know about board relations. We may know somewhat about fiscal management because that's been presented by Jack. And so some of this stuff is hard to answer from experience because you hear different things. When you think of the school staff relationships, some people don't like her, some people do. I mean, so are we typically in the past, I haven't been through this before, but we typically in the past have filled this out ourselves?
Yeah, we've done it ourselves. Being liked is not particularly one of the requirements of the job. It's actually not a performance characteristic.
I'm just saying.
But that's not what we had. But you can go and look at the other form, which is, you know, tends to lean towards the general with regards to leadership. In that one, it requires Stan, you know, that one's a little more general with six items instead of all the ones that are listed here, A through K, but covers fairly the same things.
Yeah.
But we can, you can, we certainly can alter any of these things if we feel we're not in a position to be able to judge them or if that, it's not something that we feel is important to her performance as superintendent. Yeah, Gina.
So I had a really hard time with that. I moved it back and forwards. I actually went online. I found a couple other evaluations for, from other jurisdictions, from Pennsylvania, from New York, from oddly enough, Utah. And what comes to me is a couple of things. We need to come together as a board, I think, to create our own evaluation form. I'm not sure, we can't do that tonight. That's a big, that's a big process. And we need to do something imminently and currently for our current superintendent. But I think we need to look at going forward, coming up with an evaluation procedure, process, form, whatever. But we also need to communicate that to our superintendent. I don't know that it's fair to Kathleen to sort of retrospectively evaluate her on something that she wasn't aware of going into it. I don't know if that makes sense to you.
No, absolutely.
But you say to her, well, Kathleen, you did not bring Concord Schools to the top 10% in the state. That's it. You failed. Well, we didn't, we didn't communicate that that was our goal a year ago. So how do we, I mean, yes, having good relationships with the community, yes, I think that's an expectation. Having good relationships with faculty and staff and everybody in the district, I think that's a, that's a pretty standard, you know, expectation. But I think if we're not specific about our expectations, I don't know how fair it is to evaluate her on expectations that we haven't communicated.
No, it's not. You can't do that in evaluation. That's why these are very general evaluations. And then if you create a goal and evaluation for the year coming forward, it has to meet certain things. Like if you said, we want to be in the top 10% in this school, that has to be within her control.
Right.
And so she could say, we can do that, but we need to spend, you know, $35 million to be able to upgrade this. That's not in her control.
Well, I.
And it has to be an achievable, basically goals that have to be achievable.
IEP.
They have to be, yes, they have to be, they have to be within her control.
Right.
They have to be measurable.
Measurable, right, yeah.
Right? They have to be those type of things, so.
So some of this concerns me that if we use the Concord SAU performance reviews that we were looking at, you know, some of it is pretty specific that we either wouldn't know about or would, should have, I think, communicated ahead of time.
Can we strike those out?
Sure. We can add those, get rid of those, add more, reword them.
Because if you look at, for example, leadership and management practices under Section 6, B establishes a written action plan to achieve the goal set for the district. Well, we don't have a strategic plan.
Mm-hmm.
So how do we expect her to have written goals to, I don't know. I just.
I just think that one of the benefits would be to have Kathleen do her evaluation first because then she can tell us those things. She can say, oh, this is the action plan that I did come up with, or these are the things that I am doing. So it's more of a calibration than it is us creating it from scratch, if that makes sense?
Or she could say, I didn't because I didn't need to, right?
Right.
Could I?
Go ahead.
I mean, the big picture here is also that we're dealing with interim folks.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely one interim folk, this is our second interim folk. And they, by definition, need to have somewhat of a narrower perspective than someone who hopefully we'll get that will be with us for 10 years. Because as an administrator, you can't do it all at once. And you can't come into a district like ours that's been faced with the consequences that we faced with some of the administrative decisions that were made and, you know, make her responsible for all of that either. So any of these evaluation forms should lend themselves to healthy dialogue. You know, we don't have very much of an opportunity to evaluate programs. We sort of, in the school, right? I mean, does tennis team come up and say, hey, you know, do you want us to run tennis next year? Because, no, we don't. The one area we do get to influence is this area, who is our superintendent, you know? And I think it's really important that we do that. But these should be workable documents that generate dialogue with our superintendent or interim superintendent. Because, you know, and we all as, in representing the public, you know, some of us have our own things that we would like to see happening. I mean, I want to see us being more visual in this state. You know, one of my goals for her would be that, to make sure that our staffs go into conferences and that we're players. And, you know, she under, she's now starting to realize that we haven't. That's how far she's gotten in this first year. But, and I use that as an example, not because I think it's the most important. So I think these should generate a dialogue. And I agree with what Kate says, that it would be nice if she could fill it out, then we could have a dialogue. And as well, is what Danielle is saying, is that some of this stuff, how do we know? I mean, it should almost be either non-applicable or, yeah, we don't, I'm able to evaluate. So, thank you.
Based on Dave and Gina, I think you both have really good points. I feel like the narrative document gives us more opportunities because as we, which I assume we'll be discussing, you know, move forward with a permanent superintendent search, I think this could help us start to crystallize what our goals are for the next permanent superintendent. And some of that will be things we ask Kathleen to work on, but I think some of it, I agree that, like, she's just been trying to help us keep our heads above water.
We've thought a lot of that.
And, you know, and I give her full marks for, like, that we haven't drowned. And, you know, and now we are reaching a point where we can actually think about long-term goals for the next superintendent.
And how do we work her last year?
Yeah.
Year to be, to be her priority.
Well, and then, so I appreciate that and I agree. I think, you know, the other form, the second form is a more narrative open. And then given this year, that may be very much the more appropriate form because no matter what we necessarily may have done in the previous year, we would not have predicted, like, as much as Dave wanted people to go to professional conferences, that was not going to happen in this past year.
Right, right. No, I agree.
That would have been a miserable mess, but.
Just zoom it.
Just do it. So, okay, what did people think about switching over to using the other form as a basis and then talking about that?
Sure.
All right. Well, now when we start with administration and we go through it, cert, strong leader, educational leadership, management team. So this is more general, but I think it, I think the specific items can be listed a little bit more in the comments or discussion items at the bottom and at the end of the sections.
Do we go through each one and discuss each piece?
We can discuss, I was going through and discussing each area, but we can discuss each A, B, C, D, if you would like, or 1, 2, 3, 4. And the administra, I think the topics are good. One, one we may take a look at more is the personal qualifications in this one, may discuss that a bit. But let's talk, let's first do something with regards to administration. This is now a little simpler, a 3-2-1-zero. And there will be zeros because some, because we will not have all had opportunity to interact on every possible topic with her. So, so going through the first one, items one through seven, many of these are similar to the other ones, but anyone have any discussion or comments with regards to any of those items? Yeah, Brenda?
I'm wondering if, when I looked at this at first, I thought two, five, and maybe seven would have been zeros. I don't know if you all agree or, because I don't know how we could evaluate those.
Well, I think we can evaluate them and as we view them from a board perspective, I would, I would be able to rank at least two.
You would be able to rank, okay.
In discussions that we've had with regards to what we were looking, especially with, you know, for instance, it might only be in the areas that we know, but she has a basically COVID assistance plan that extends out through 2023, so she has done that. Yeah, Gina?
We can't discuss how this applies.
Not to a person, but we can discuss how this document is used to. And in that respect, we have to kind of do it in like a superintendent, as if this was a.
Right, we have to go into non-public.
We'd have to go into non-public to talk about specifics.
So we're just looking at this, is this a form we want to use?
Right. The public part of this, we have to sort of deal with just the form.
Okay.
Then the point is to move into non-public and we discuss how the form applies specifically.
Okay.
Because what we're doing then.
Is different terms.
Specifically applies to personnel matters.
Yep, that makes sense.
So this has to be sort of a more general, do we like the form? Is there something about the form we want to change?
Okay.
Is there something about the form we want to delete? Is there?
Yeah, sort of a generic superintendent that this is how we would evaluate it.
And then when we get into this past year, you know, we will get into specifics about
that for this particular superintendent, and that'll be in non-public. But are these reasonable things for us to be evaluating, you know, any superintendent on, regardless of who it would have been in the past year?
Jim, who put this together?
Where did we pull this one? One was from.
This is from the files.
One was from what we have used in the past.
This one's Hampton, I think.
Another was pulled from one of the S School Board Association workshop type of things. But if someone has other things they want to do, that's fine.
No, I was just saying, they've done a lot of the thinking.
I've just grabbed these two because they were from established. And the one I believe that we're looking at now, the more general, was used here in the past.
And I just think that they've probably done a lot of that homework for us in terms of putting these evaluation forms together and know what typically is being asked, so.
And moving forward?
Yeah.
There, I mean, I went and looked at other jurisdictions and there are some pretty amazing forms out there, but I think that has to be something that the board comes together and decides this is what we want to use and needs to be communicated to the superintendent sort of upfront.
Yeah, for the upcoming year.
For the upcoming year. That's, that's a, that's a big chunk that I think we can do tonight.
No, I've been committing bollocks.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, because a typical evaluation would be a review using any sort of a template you want to use of the prior year, discussion of goals for the coming year, strengths, shortcomings, and then resources required to achieve those goals. And then, you know, just coming to an agreement on what those goals are and communication to whichever employee, in this case, the superintendent, that we would be covering.
Yeah, no, I just, there are great, there are great templates out there. I just think that's beyond the scope of what we can do today.
There's 100 templates out there, yes. So what I'm looking for, what we're looking for tonight is to just something we can use to evaluate and give feedback to our interim superintendent. And then, yes, we, as we go forward to thinking about goals coming up in the future, we would like to set then that would be incorporated in anything, either in something similar to this, which is typically what's added, it's just incorporated in or created another section. So, yeah, go ahead, John.
I like this form more because as others have said, it gives us more latitude going to certain, well, the questions themselves are not as detailed. I think for like the section with the relationship with the staff, I think we're much more prepared to provide answers. And Jim, I know you mentioned at the beginning, the one section we might want to edit a bit is personal qualities. I agree there. For the first one, for example, defense principle and convicting, you know, face of pressure and partisan influence yet is able to conference, I don't know, just the phrasing there.
Yeah.
I might want to edit.
Yeah, I was, that's, that's not, that one was a little awkward. Two, I think is fine. Three, we have to decide if that's something we care to make a major bullet point, in my opinion, as I look through this. Four is fine, but could be reworded a little bit as far as self-evaluation. So that's, that's the one I would just have some discussion on. But as we, as we go forward in the first one, administration. And the thing is, is in this type of a form, especially in comments, that's where you would identify or go into detail for anything that was either substandard or something was in, or something that is absolutely excelling and that would be commendable, that you wanted to call out as a feedback item. So, any other, other input with regards to this?
Are we still on administration?
We can, I haven't heard anything, but yeah, administration, what do we have?
I'm good.
I'm fine. I think, I don't have any problem with that. It'll be interesting when we come together to write it because the one thing about being broad is that we'll have to come to a consensus. The next one is instruction.
I have one there. Do you want me to have a minute? I would be interested in looking at, in the first version, under educational objectives, which was one, Section 1C, maybe adding that because I think that's something we would want any superintendent to do. So it's Section 1, letter C.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I agree.
Especially with this year.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just looking to see that it wasn't covered in another.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to end up with two that are very, very similar.
Right.
I'd rather come up with one good one. But I agree with you on that one and I, and I think that's not really covered in any of the other bullets on, under instruction, so we'll add that one.
Okay. Sorry, so add Section 1, room number 1, C to instruction number 10?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm just trying to.
No, thank you for that. I am too, so that we can come together and agree on that. The only one I thought in, as I went through this earlier and I went through, and I'm kind of going back and forth on it right now, so you can all easily override me, is I thought seven under this was really vague and a little weak. But if that, if you think that's a good wording in that, that's fine.
Similar to I on the other form that accepts proposals for educational change for inside and outside the educational community would be.
Yeah, actually, I liked that wording a little bit better, but I'm. Yeah, actually, I liked that wording a little bit better, but I'm open to whatever. I just felt that seven was just kind of weakly worded. But I do like Kate's, uh, reading and, I guess, I from one before. What's anybody else's thoughts on that?
I found it in front of me.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So seven will become.
Substitute.
One I.
Seven.
Yeah, no, I just, sorry, it's difficult with roman numeral.
Yes.
One.
I. All uppercase.
One I for instruction number seven.
Yeah.
I'm like, how am I supposed to write one I and make?
We just have to keep it if you have a question to ask. Other comments or input? This is one of those ones where I, when I get to instruction number four, I'm not sure I can really evaluate that and, because I just don't know enough, but I, I think we should leave it in.
Well, I, I, yeah, I, I like it, and when we go to non-public, I can.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments on instruction? Ready to move on to relationship with the board?
Oh, and now we may have some, we may want to go back to instruction a little bit.
Okay.
For the relationship with the board, there is one on the other form that I really like. Section four, subpoint E, that anticipates sensitive issues and acts proactively to minimize potential difficulties. I, I, I really like that one. I don't see it mentioned on.
Other folks on that?
I agree.
So number eight would be.
The one that I actually could see it matching up with possibly though, what is, if we look in the relationship with community, there's one point four that says has ability to face controversy and work effectively with it. So I guess, do we think those are different enough?
I think they're different.
Okay.
This is a board versus community.
Yeah. One is dealing with it before it becomes a problem, one is dealing with it after.
So add four E to board number eight?
Yes.
So Barb, we're just reviewing the form, and we had a little bit of a discussion that said, you know, this, we can't throw anything new in there because we haven't told her. But we need, as we pulled these two, and as you know, we have these two forms that represent some overall evaluation that has been used either here in the past or in other districts in the past. We decided that we would work with the one that has comments on all the bottom ones, because everybody liked the, the ability, the more generalization of those questions and our ability to expand and espouse on them at the end of the, the items. So we're talking through step by step. And Gina can tell you, we can go on instruction, but right now we're on relationship with the board. And we had just added from the other page, item roman numeral four E, to include that as item eight.
Got it. That's what Nathan just said.
Hmm?
I mean Jonathan.
Jonathan just said, yes.
I just called you Nate.
Yeah, we're throwing back to another board. So any other comments, any other comments with regards to relationship with the board?
Just general, a question for the rating for this category, are we seeing that as like an average of each of the numbers?
The overall rating for the category?
Yeah, for what it's in each section.
Um, well, I would go with a general average, but you could do with a weighted average, or there's a variety of ways, I believe we were going to come. What I was hoping is that after we all have an opportunity, and this is not going to be our last meeting on this, but we all have an opportunity to, as Kate has said earlier, is that we get a chance to read the superintendent's comments, read our own evaluation on this, and then come to a consensus or whatever we wanted to put down on the final item. And if not a consensus, at least a majority, so.
So what about? Something that jumps out at me is the negotiated contract negotiations. Does that come up somewhere else on this one? Because that is a pretty important.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the superintendent is, is, is involved in every group's contract negotiation, so I feel like that's a pretty important thing to.
Um. Yeah, is that included anywhere else on this? I didn't.
Uh, no, it's not in the.
No, it really.
No, then I would be willing, you know, I'd be willing to add that as nine, if everybody else is in agreement, because that is a critical part of the.
Would that be under financial, though?
Or relations with staff?
I didn't see anything in relations with staff.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it sounded in other categories.
It could be put in there as.
It doesn't have to go here, but it needs to be somewhere. I guess that's not.
Yeah, it could go either here or it could go in relationship with staff. And may fit better in relationship with staff?
Or wouldn't it, is it not an administration piece, the very first?
It could go in an administration piece in the very beginning, too. What are, what are the board's thoughts?
Took a bunch of ad.
Where would we like to add it? I'm, I'm.
As a former staff member in the district, I feel like it belongs under a staff, staff relations, but that's just my.
And there's something about it I don't like under staff, because I feel like it.
Well, yeah, no, no, maybe that's a good point, too.
Makes it a little antagonistic almost.
Right. I wonder if it should be under administration?
Administration.
Put under administration.
So let's, so let's add it to administration. Okay.
Yeah, administration eight.
Yep. It is roman numeral four G from the other form.
Yeah, what's nice is those are all roman numerals and letters, and then they're all.
You know, confusing.
Arabic numbers, so.
So. Other, other items under relationship with the board. So are we ready to move on to next one, which is relationship with staff?
Can we go back to, to board for one second?
We sure can.
I like.
Did I jump and cut you off?
Sorry.
Gina, I apologize.
That's okay. I, I really like, although I, I want to kind of change the wording a little bit, but. I kind of like the concept of C, but I don't like the way it's worded, because we didn't always agree with where, with administration. And again, we're getting into, I can't apply it, but I, I like C that, that, you know, openly expresses an opinion, works towards that, but when the board says, let's take a right turn at Albuquerque, then the superintendent steps up and does the right turn at Albuquerque, because that's what they were directed to do.
So that would incorporate the one you're looking at in C, and I think that.
Like four C.
Ties with six, to be quite honest. It'd be wording with six or just a better worded.
So four C instead of board six?
Well, let's discuss how we.
I've just, yeah, no, I'm open for discussion.
I feel like four and six sort of incorporate both as separate items, like states convictions and then support boards' policies to the public and staff.
And then there's three that uses the word harmonious working relationship.
I'm not laughing at you, I'm laughing at harmonious.
Well, I think that we all know of non-harmonious. So, yeah, how do we want to, does, because both four and six play in with C, so how would we like to change any of them? Add any, anything to them, reword it?
Or are people happy with, with splitting it into four and six? Well, I see the difference, I see what you're pointing out, which is that she might have a real, or the superintendent might have a very strong opinion on something, and the board says no. Okay, then you go. Because sometimes it's very, very difficult to step up and say, okay, but I will impli-- I'm on the losing side, but I will implement what the winning side has determined. Right, right. It was like full decay, and what, that's what comes.
But I think that says that in six, right? States it are convictions and matters before the board.
But it doesn't have the second part.
It doesn't have the second part.
Right.
When her convictions aren't what we think. Well, and it's that supports board policy and decisions.
Do we want instead of?
I don't know. I just, I don't know. I mean, do we want to leave it at four and six and get rid of the other one, and, or, I don't know.
Or change the period to a comma?
Just wait, Jonathan, you had a comment?
Well, I wonder if like substituting implements instead of interprets might solve something? Maybe not.
Wait, on six?
No, on four.
Oh, on four.
Well, yeah, but there are times when we say something and she has to change that into all, and interpret it as to all the applications across the school, so I see why they put that in there.
Could we add the word implement?
Yeah, interprets and implements? And supports, oh my gosh.
Maybe interpret, maybe interprets, supports, and implements.
And you could add a comma at the end of that and just say regardless of whether the superintendent agrees with the board's decision.
Do you think that's too much, David?
Yeah, I do. I, I think, I think interprets and supports board policy and decisions to public and staff is pretty adequate. But we could say implements as well. But I think it says that. Because we did ask her to do things a few things, ah, can't talk about it, but.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we're at times.
Well, there are times when we ask any superintendent to do things.
Right. You know, when she stepped up, I agree.
So, um, so, yeah, we're not going to get into details because of non-public versus public, but we can talk about this. But I, what does anyone else's feel?
If people think four and six took cover, then I'm.
I'm comfortable with four and six. What are you, what is anybody else's? Does anybody feel strongly that, that we need to change four and six?
No, I don't think so, Gina. Glad you brought it up.
Thank you, Gina.
Glad you brought it up.
I think we're just, that was a good discuss, no, it's a good discussion of staff. Other items with regards to relationship to the board, with the board. Done? Okay, we can always come back, because that's what we do sometimes. But let's go to relationship with staff.
So the one thing I felt that was missing, it sort of says it communicates concerns employees have to the board and board decisions back to the employees, but there isn't sort of a general, like, communicate well with employees. That I, and you know, maybe, I don't feel like that's under administration either. Like, there's things that are us that they need to communicate back and forth, but the superintendent needs to be able to communicate, listen, and communicate well with employees on a whole host of issues that don't come to the board.
I would actually say, take that a step farther and say that it's important for the superintendent to facilitate the communications with administration and employees, whether it's principal.
Yep.
Central office.
Yep.
But I think that is a key responsibility, because communications back and forth within the, the district, among its, of many employees, staff members, and teachers are, is critical. I think it's just an important and a general thing that the superintendent sets the tone on. Now, I'm not an English major, so I'm not going to word that correctly. Somebody else can take a stab at that, but I agree.
What about one?
I think it's a little different.
Yeah.
But maintains open and effective communication with.
Yep.
H, uh, two H in the sec, the first one said strives to maintain positive, but it doesn't, that's employee morale, but. Communication.
Maintains open and.
Effective lines of communication.
Effective communication is what she said?
Sure.
Yeah.
With all employees.
With all employees across the district, or is there anything else we want to add to that? Or just with all employees, period? It's very broad in general. We can specifically write things in the comments if we had a concern or anything with that, but I think that, does that fit everyone's?
Just to remember that she is their boss, and she, she may not always agree with them. Or whoever is their boss, they don't always agree with them, with his staff. It's important they communicate.
Yep.
Agree.
And, and, and are felt, felt listened to. But we don't want this to in any way minimize her role as the lead, as a leader and effective manager. Because you're not popular all the time.
No.
I agree.
That's not much.
So not, number seven maintains open and effective lines of communication with all employees?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
But I, I understand what you're saying, I just don't want to air to the side of administering any super.
Yeah, Jonathan?
I like a version of, on the other form, two K maintains a high visibility within schools. Like whether we say provides opportunities to meet with staff or something. I just like the idea of someone's presence being a part of this.
I like the way they've main, they said maintains a high visibility within the school facilities.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So that would be eight.
So eight becomes two K.
Wasn't, oh, maybe I'm remembering it from reading this one. I was going to say, wasn't that already in here? But.
We talked about it, but I don't think we added it.
Let's, let's look back. I can't say, I can't say for certain.
I may just be remembering it from reading that form, I'm sorry.
Can you read number seven again?
Uh, maintains open and effective lines of communication with all employees. Barb, are you doing this real time, Jack?
He is.
I figured this way I could send it right out.
We appreciate that.
No problem.
See, Jack is good not only with numbers. So then eight would be two K from the prior form. Anything else anybody wants to incorporate or to adjust? Or delete, whichever? No? Are we ready to move on to relationship with the community?
It may be covered in number one, but I, I feel like it's a little different, which is effective and open communication with parents and guardians and students. But, you know, sort of talking, a press release program, I think, is different than.
Phone call or email.
Or talking to parents before you, you know, other stakeholder, you know, we talk to teachers before we implement changes, but we don't always talk to.
Parents.
Parents. And again, they shouldn't be dispositive, but they have a viewpoint that I think we need to do a better job incorporating. So I would add parents and, you know, facilitates effective communications with parents and guardians.
I agree. Is that a new number?
Yes.
Yeah, no, it would be seven.
So what would you like to add?
For seven facilitates effective and open communications with parents and guardians.
Yeah, I mean, we have public officials, community leaders, we don't have parents.
No.
Which are critical, please.
Is that too similar to number six? It's not specific to parents, but interested groups.
I feel like interested groups.
I look at that as like a.
An ab, you know, the.
An advocacy or a political or a.
That's how I read it, so.
I like the parents regardless, because it's actually stating that.
And they need, not that they see this, but if they did, they would need to see that we care what they think.
Yeah, actually, I looked at six and I'm kinda like, I'm not quite sure what that means that is different than one, or.
Yeah.
It kinda seems extraneous to me. I'd rather have the facilitates open and effective communication with parents and guardians. I think it just nails it a little.
Well, but I think six is different, because six, I think, if you've got a subgroup in a community that has a particular concern, that's an interested group. That's not necessarily globally parents and guardians.
I, I was thinking of that as like the group that got put together to work on the transgender policy, or, or some of the anti-racism things that we're bringing in, people who are not necessarily directly connected to the schools, but they have an interest or expertise on the subject.
Of our community, exactly. Or, or even in putting together, and again, we can't really talk specifics, but in putting together certain plans, some really well-conceived and done plans with interested groups of our community.
Okay. So I'm fine with leaving it in.
Yeah, I think, I think six is important for that purpose, but I also think the reason we wanna say parents and guardians is you've all experienced the, the challenge where someone wants to go beyond the principal and then rises to the level of an assistant super, superintendent. We wanna know that parents get to that level, that they may heard and expected. And that's why I like what Brenda said, in that in specific.
Jonathan?
Do we prefer on the other form, the, on section five, subpoint C, instead, in loop six, which says actively solicit, solicits participation by community members in the decision-making process wherever appropriate?
I don't think they're the same.
I didn't know.
They're the same.
Yeah, that looks similar. It's the same enough, less words.
I wondered if we wanted to maybe do that with number one here and, and A on board relations? If we'd liked the wording better on section four A.
You mean five A?
Five A. No.
Before I keep school reform?
No, I was on the wrong, sorry. It was, um, I don't know, I've lost my place.
Keep the community informed.
Five A versus number one here?
Yeah, five A versus number one. Yes, that is it.
What is anybody, what are anybody's thoughts on that?
I, I like, I actually like five A better, too.
I like five A better, too. How about anybody else? Is there, I don't wanna.
Either way is fine with me.
Yeah, I'm fine with this as well.
I, um, my other one is, that I looked at is.
Well, wait, before we leave that.
Are we good? Okay.
We need to make a decision, cause I'm trying to keep notes and poor Jack is trying to.
Okay. So do we wanna substitute five A from the other for a relationship with the community number one on this one? Is the suggestion. Is everybody okay with that?
This one.
Yes.
Good with that? Okay. And then the other one that I like better, I like five at V, Roman numeral five, F, as opposed to have a, it just strikes me weird is the maintains a professional posture with other public officials and community leaders. Just seems so awkward to me. I like the, the other version, five A.
Sorry, five F instead of.
Three.
Who's to decide what's professional?
It's just, professional posture, just, I'm just not sure what that means exactly.
Never had one, wouldn't know.
Well, yes.
Oh, yeah, sit up straight here.
I'm off the board again. Oh, well.
Bye. See you later.
And I, I just think it's clear the other way. Other comments or improvements? Are we good? We can move on then to, this is the, the personal qualities.
We could have nine different ideas of what good personal qualities.
Well. Yeah, let's just.
Can I suggest then that we, for a second, look at what we said in the NASDAQ thing? Cause we have some stuff.
Do we have, does everybody have, does, do we need to have everybody have some copies from our NASDAQ item? Does everybody have that?
If you have your computers, you have them, too.
I know.
Bring, bring mine.
Oh, you can hear. But I just, there was, there was.
Well, I wonder, too, if we wanna look at the leadership, uh, section six, leadership and management from the first one instead of personal qualities and sort of substitute some of those things in here.
Where would it be in the chart?
Cause what we're asking for is somebody that creates a positive climate and culture, fosters values and relationships, excellent team building skills.
Maybe we want leadership instead of personal qualities?
Leader, leadership and management practices versus personal qualities.
Cause personal qualities is personally, personally. Like, maybe an extrovert and introvert, doesn't matter. Right. That's what I think of with a personal quality.
So I don't know that everybody.
No, I know.
Heard that little, our little.
No, you're saying personal quality, but weird.
Yeah.
So we change that to leadership and management practices, that, which, which was from the first one?
So change heading.
I don't have any mail from Jack.
Pam, I sent it to you.
Cause some of these are the same ones as personal qualities.
Oh, it's from Gina. Looking for Gina. A lot from Gina. Sorry. My mistake. Thank you. Thank you, Jonathan.
So change heading from personal qualities to section six.
Yes.
Yeah, cause I don't, it, it's just personal qualities feels kind of to me like a personal, you're like, I don't know, you're evaluating.
Their, like, learning style and their communications, like, you know.
What was the change?
From the, the subject title from, the heading title of this section, from personal qualities to leadership and management practices for, you know, abilities or whatever practices is what I'm suggesting.
I think I would suggest substituting all of the subtopics there under the leadership and management practices over here as well.
So just get rid of the whole personal qualities section?
Right, yeah.
I'm, I would, yeah.
And replace it with A through S.
Except that I have problems with like B. We didn't ask her to do that.
We can take that out. Yeah, we can take some of these out.
So take, take one down.
We didn't ask her to do that, so.
Yeah, so take out B. But would we ask, would we ask forward going as superintendent to do that?
And also, I think if we leave it in there, again, the person being evaluated might have something to tell us even if we put unable to evaluate.
Right.
Yeah, right. We can put an A. Yeah, right, right, right. Let's leave it. I agree. Good point.
I'm just, I'm just back to where I don't know that it's fair to sort of retroactive. Oh, by the way, we were supposed to do that as well.
Of course, this is the first time in my nine years on the board that we've had this going on, so.
Well, that's, I will, yeah, everybody else doesn't know that in the past, the whole board didn't participate in this. It tended to be the leadership, the executive committee. But we, in our executive committee, have decided that we would much prefer to have everybody involved in this, since we all interact.
It's our job as a board.
And, and that it's an important item. So during our meeting last week, we wanted to make sure, actually before last week, but our meeting last month, we decided that, you know, while it may be a little more cumbersome, we think we would like to do it this way.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Because I remember in the past when I wasn't on the executive committee, I wasn't secretary or vice president or anything.
You would've known.
Or you knew.
That you kinda got it a little bit after the fact and you read it.
Right.
And if you really wanted to object, you could, but I think, um, I think, I think we'll do it this way, and, and if anybody thinks this was not as productive, then we will look at it again for next year, but that's why we're in here, so. Is there anything else in section, Roman numeral six?
I might just get rid of S, because I think we have that in the relationship with staff. Or we're asking it there, so that's it.
Yeah, that was a. So A through R.
I'd like to add something from, again, the NASDAQ thing about creating a positive, or works to create a positive climate and culture within our school district.
We didn't have that? I thought we had that.
I didn't.
What's, I don't know. So it would've been the.
Not anything without it.
No.
No, I think that's a good addition.
No, it is a good addition, yeah.
I mean, I think because, because of the history.
I think it's just an important aspect of any leader in a position to do, to do that, so I agree with you entirely on that. So, that's new S.
Yes.
Okay.
For another, I, I would also like to add that is a strategic thinker and change agent, as a T, which is also on the.
Where are you?
NASDAQ form. Who are adding to?
Oh, you wanna add to this? Okay.
Yes. I don't know what others think.
Sorry, what is, what?
The other, the, one of the other, on both points, is a strategic thinker and change agent from the NASDAQ form.
As T.
As T.
Okay. Everyone in agreement with that?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Good. Anything else in leadership and management practices?
So we decided to get rid of what was here and replace it with everything on the other one.
We did.
So I just, it maintains high standards of ethics, honesty, and integrity in all personal and professional matters. Somehow conveyed in the.
Seven N?
N.
Uh, six N. Sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, Kate, would you like to change six N to exhibits a high degree of ethics, honesty, and integrity? Instead of just integrity?
Yes, if everyone would be.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Very good.
Sorry, okay, as.
So now we're pulling from the other form, back into this.
I like it.
As ethics, comma, honesty. As a carrot.
Sorry, Gina. Sorry, Jack.
No, I think that's a good addition.
Cause that, it, it blows out the whole form, so that's one off.
A different font, right.
Yeah, with that comma. But then, I, I can fix that way, user, I'll go upstairs, but I just wanted to make sure I have it right before I do that.
Well, and I've got notes, Jack, if you want.
Well, good for you. I'm just typing in the, what the new N is gonna be.
Right, right, right. So you can fix it later.
I'm impressed with your secretarial skills. In addition to your money skills and everything else.
And tech skills.
And tech skills, yeah.
Had to explain that to my teenagers who had no idea what I was talking about. It's a dated, dated commercial. You don't know what.
I don't know what you're talking about.
It was, it was a former television commercial. We'll, we'll, we'll explain it offline.
So I don't think we wanna do that.
Was it that long ago?
It must've been long enough ago, but, yeah, when you get old.
It's a strategic thinker and change agent. Oh, just that, 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 yeah.
Anything else with regards to leadership and management practices? Very good. Good discussion. Let's move on to what appears to be the last column, last item, which is financial corresponding with fiscal management on the other form.
Are we, are we able to add in a one-year specific question? I'm just thinking with like all the COVID funds that we received this year, um, it might be wise to have a point that says manages, um.
Like a little asterisk.
Funding well, disperses funds properly throughout schools, good programming.
It's kind of an after-the-fact add that you don't normally do, but in my experience, um, giving performance reviews or going, participating in performance reviews, that would be something that you would call completely out in the comments section.
Okay.
Because it's specific to this year in relation to that, but.
Well, and also, I think it's kind of covered in six with maximum utilization of resources, cause.
But it would be something that, you know, as an example or as a specific commendation that you would call out, that I would recognize that you would call out, so I think that's, that's fine.
I, I would like to add three D.
Yeah, oh, as the new S.
Yeah, no. Yes, I would, too.
I'm sorry, what?
Would like to add three D regularly provides comprehensive financial reports to the school board as a new seven.
I was just writing that, yep. Yeah, so in, I'd like to have updates. How are we doing with the budget? Are we on track? Are we way over? Have we got money to spend? Probably not ever gonna happen.
The other, um, the other one that I see in the other form that stands out to me is three G. It's not mentioned in there, but ultimately the superintendent has responsibility to make sure that our procurement and contracting process is conducted according to, you know, the goals of the, or policies of the board, which is sufficient and consistent factor. I, I would add that in there, but if you think that's a detail that's too detailed, that's fine.
I'm okay with mine.
Which letter was that?
G.
So that would be an eight.
Sorry, did you get that, Jack?
Yeah, G.
Yeah.
Not three G, just that, that whole thing, right?
Anyone else have? Is everybody good with the financial side? Okay. Are we pretty good with utilizing this? If we type that up, then procedurally, next week, is everyone comfortable with me giving a copy of this to the superintendent for a self-evaluation?
Can I ask a quick question?
You sure can.
So I'm looking at instruction on this. Was there anything, any big changes there?
Oh.
Uh, let's, yeah, for the.
Just so I can see if there's something.
Let's, uh.
We have Brendan and Neil, so I'm not too, and David, so I'm not super worried, but.
That's the one where we went I, I, I won.
So if you take that.
Yeah. Educational objectives?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. We substituted one, I substituted for seven.
So in the meantime, procedurally, um, we would give this next week for a self-evaluation by the superintendent. Um, at that point, does, do we want to fill out our own form concurrently? Or do we want to take her self-evaluation and bring it back? Or do we wanna basically, I was gonna say, have us fill out our form concurrently and then schedule a meeting for what I assume would be either very late July or early August, where we would all sit down with her evaluation, superintendent's evaluation, our ranking and evaluation on this, and incorporate those all into one document. Does anybody feel strongly one way? Does anybody feel strongly one way or the other? I would like to, I would like us each to fill it out on our own and then have her fill her self-evaluation out, and then us get together again. And, and I know I'm asking for another meeting, but I'm going to set another meeting when you come back, because I just think it's important for us to do it as a group.
So she would get one from us as a group?
Yes, just one from us as a group.
Yep.
We will all agree in the evaluation, because that just gets way too confusing. Give her nine different ones. But we will put it together, and then either, you know, I can do it, I and the other two members of the executive committee can do it, or as a group, we can do it, but that's a little overbowering, in my opinion. So we can sit down and discuss that then. All right? So Gina, when we get this, all these changes incorporated and typed up, can we send that to all of the board members?
Absolutely.
So that everyone can do that. And does anybody want to try to set a date now for when we get back together?
Would it be possible to do it before the board meeting on the second?
Yes, I think, in other words, do it earlier than the seven o'clock meeting? Could we all get together at either five or 5:30, but just generally agree to and publish as one specific time?
The August third meeting?
August second.
Second, okay, sorry, yep.
So, to be clear, sorry, you are asking us to fill these out prior to reading the superintendent?
Yes, and then we will all sit down and have a copy of her self-evaluation as well as our items, and we will, we will discuss the consensus item that we give back to the superintendent. And any comments or details in that? August second?
At what time?
5:30, five, whichever, five is a...
Are people going to come at five?
Right.
Five is...
It could take a while to go through them.
Yeah, I would say we might take a little bit of time, so five would probably be good. We just have to make sure it's published at this, that we publish one time in all locations on the webpage.
Is there a reason we don't want to do this on the 28th of July?
Uh, I don't know, let me take a look at the 28th of July.
I mean, then we're not trying to put, yeah, I'm being selfish here, but I have a hard time being hours and hours away from...
No, that's okay.
Those long evenings, but there's nothing on the 28th, so if that's all we had...
Yeah, does anybody have any? Let me check my time.
Well, can you run through what you're envisioning the process to be again?
Uh, and, yeah, this is just open, why I envision the process to be is after we get this tightened up.
Right.
And it's all printed correctly, that each of us would take a copy and we would do our own evaluation of, you know, what we think this would be, and then we would bring that with us. In the meantime, next week, I will give this form to the superintendent and have the superintendent do a self-evaluation in the same. And then when we get back together, we all have all of those documents in one spot, and we come with a, and we, at that point, craft our overall...
I don't think an hour before a school board meeting is necessarily the best way to do this.
So, okay, the 28th, right? So, did I answer your question, Gina?
Yeah.
And would you change it?
She said something about the executive committee, so I was...
No, I was saying that after we're done with that, the actual sitting down with the superintendent would be, we can determine how many, who and, and when we would do that.
So 5:30 on the 28th?
Does July 28th at 5:30 work for everyone?
Yes.
Here, Jack, is there any problems with us meeting here on the 28th?
No.
No, we haven't anything? All right? That sounds good.
What time?
5:30.
5:30.
So that would be a non-public meeting.
That would be a non-public meeting, yes.
Non-public or non-meeting?
Non-public.
Okay.
It's non-public for reasons of...
Yeah, that'll be that.
Non-meeting is typically legal, constantly.
Do we have a non-public tonight?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
To be a public for this first part.
Discussion. Right now, though, we have the next, if we're finished with that section, it would be appropriate for at this time to think of any goals and throw them out here, and this is, of course, something we can do right up until the 28th, we can discuss it much further at the 28th. But I just wanted to open it up to specific goals or items that we would want to include in the coming year that we wanted to, to let the superintendent know of, whether it be associated with meeting deadlines and meeting, doing the things required for a middle school or a new school item, or if it would be, you know, anything else we wanted to, you know, reestablish or further establish the CPAC organization, whatever we want to think is important for this coming year, this next 12 months. So, does anybody have any specifics that they want to put in at this time? If not, we can talk about these on the 28th, but I just wanted to get, give anybody an opportunity to throw things out for us to think about.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, problem on the 28th?
No, I just got a message from somebody that said there was no sound or picture on YouTube for tonight's meeting.
Oh, okay.
But that could have been before it came on. It looks like it was at 5:25, I got that.
Yeah, we weren't live.
Okay, all right, that's why.
Would it be helpful for, for the meeting on the 28th if we all sort of came with our top three goals or something, so that we had a discussion?
I think that would help out.
Something to discuss off of?
Bring your top three goals. If you only have two, we happen to have four, we won't be too judgmental. All right, I think that's a great idea. And then, anybody have anything else at that point? Because Gina wants to discuss something that's on the next topic, but, but I wanted to wrap this up first. All right? Good, thanks, everybody. Think of your goals. Go ahead, Gina.
Okay, so, when we had our non-meeting, sorry, I'm going to take this off, I'm not feeling great, which is why I was wearing a mask, when we had our non-meeting with council, one of the issues that was brought up was cell phone usage during public school board meetings.
Like right now?
Yeah. It's, anything you do on your cell phone during a school board meeting is technically subject to both the right to know and discovery, if we ever get sued. So basically, you are inviting someone to come and completely, you know, rummage through your, your cell phone for whatever they want, because we've been on our phone in a public meeting.
Yeah, we could have been talking about the meeting.
Well, furthermore, furthermore, there's a little trickier one is, go ahead.
Well, and providing access to school board members during a school board meeting via text or whatever, has some pretty tricky implications, depending on who it is that's making contact. So, for example, if my husband emails me to say, you know, the child fell down the stairs, you've got to go and meet me at the hospital, that's, that's different than a member of the community emailing me saying...
Or texting you and saying...
Or texting me and saying, you know, blah, 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 this is not what happened, blah, 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 and...
Yeah, technically, what it is, and as we were, I was in that meeting involved, so, so if...
That happens all the time.
If I get a text that says we can't hear the sound, then technically, what I need to say, if I'm going to say that I'd like to enter into the minutes, that Beth Richards contacted me and communicated this item, because essentially, in addition to the fact that I've allowed someone to communicate and contact a board member outside of the policy of public comment, it is also happening at the point where it is a public meeting. And so there's some real, basically pitfalls that we can run in there. Now, on the other hand, I mean, that's, that's where it is, so we should not be doing that. On the other hand, those of us who have, you know, children and family and all have to maintain communication, that we have to be available, that if someone would call and say, I need you to come to the emergency room right now, or I need this particular assistance, or even something as simple as, can you tell me where something is, we can excuse ourselves and go out of the meeting and make that personal item, that personal communication. But it was a rather eye-opening in, item or conference discussion with the attorney as far as the right to know law.
I can't think my calendar, why?
I mean, certainly somebody texting during the meeting about the meeting, I agree that that is a public record and email, but a non-related communication is not a governmental record. So if I get an email or a text from a friend saying, where are we going to dinner this weekend during the meeting, which I will swipe away, like that, I don't agree that that becomes a governmental record, because it is not in any way related to the governmental, the purpose of the meeting, it's not on my school board device, it just happened to come in at that time.
It, and I, I see your point, if it has nothing to do to, with the school board or the meeting, or a comment of anything that happened here, or in a live, real time, then it doesn't seem, but it was a tricky area, and Gina, you probably remember a deep legal aspect of that.
But should the question arise, then the answer is prove it. Prove that that wasn't anything about school board business, and then your phone is open to review, everything on your phone is then open to review in possible litigation.
That's much the same as a cal, like if I had a calendar and I had some personal Xs on particular dates in a month, I would have to explain those in a case where it was brought out in a public item. I'd have to explain what those Xs were, and I know that that has happened in the past with other people that have said, that have had to actually prove it, what are those dates? What are those influence? So anyway, we wanted to bring it up because we want us all to be cautious as to not get into a position where someone seeing us on TV, for instance, texting and saying, or having something like, you know, hearing about the no sound, I don't think would cause a huge problem. Responding to someone on Facebook while we were on here would have a huge problem, and then all the ones in between that Gina just mentioned, so...
Well, and Facebook is a public record, so in our process with the lawsuit with Molly, it's amazing what, in a, in a litigation situation, what becomes no longer your private property, and you wouldn't imagine any connection at all. But, but text messaging is one thing, and to get someone's personal text messages is much more difficult than Facebook data, which is public, and all they have to do is ask. So, so another piece of this would be stay off of Facebook during meeting times, because even, even Messenger, which is part of Facebook, is considered public, so this is, this is...
So our advice here, coming into this, is, you know, we don't want to shut down your communications with your family for, you know, you know, the, the normal life things that we all have to deal with, and we're all here an awful lot, and we do need to be able to have that communication. But, you know, keep your, you know, communications and phone items limited to those items, those, those categories, I guess is what we want to make sure, because we don't want to, we don't want to create an issue or cause a problem. We haven't had one, this group hasn't had a problem where we don't get things done because we're all distracted on anything else, we're all doing the work that we need to do, but let's make sure that we had it off before. Dave, I think, was first.
Yeah, I, I use it as my computer, but, but the public, what came up in part of this discussion, the public image may not know that I'm using it as a computer. They may think I'm just talking to somebody and texting, so it doesn't look good as well. I mean, we're running into this with everything we do, with school, with kids, should parents be interrupting, should kids be texting in their classes to the parents? I don't feel good, will you come get me? Well, no, they should be going to the office and making a phone, having something, a phone call, so there's a public perception as well when we're on this phone, so I need to bring my computer.
Gina?
Yeah, the other thing is that you may, and Jim, Jim has a great example of this, but you may want to make sure that you're not doing personal business on your school board computer. I did that, I didn't realize that I had logged in on Google to the SAU Google instead of my personal Google, and had a whole bunch of stuff about my late father's estate on there, and all of a sudden, I was like, oh, expletive! So you may want to make, you may want to be careful that what's on your school board computer is your school board stuff, and your personal computer is your personal stuff, and you don't mix it, so...
Well, and, and the other thing I want to just say is, by now, you know how we do things, that at any time, you can just say, I need to be excused for a few minutes and just, you know, take off to the other room, nobody's going to say anything. If you want to say, and the other thing is, you could say, Jim, could you call a three-minute recess, right, if you don't want to miss anything? And I'm more than happy to do that, because, you know, you know, I, my two boys are teens, so I've gone through many years of getting that unexpected text or phone call, but it's terribly important that I respond to it, so I understand everyone on that one, so, that's all, that's what we wanted to say. If somebody has questions, you know, we can, we can try to answer them, or we can refer them to our attorney, but it's kind of the basic thing of, you know, when we're here, we're typing and doing our work associated with, with here, and, and everybody is, you know, is good with that. All right? Anything else than, I, we have a non-public discussion, and I don't have the 93, oh, you, Jack, you did it for me, great.
Did it.
So, you're awesome.
Didn't nobody.
So, so I would like to make a motion that we go into a non-public session relative to RSA 91-A colon 3 to C and B, which involves items that discuss publicly would affect, adversely affect the reputation of any person, and the hiring of any person as a public employee. We will, after, if this passes, this motion passes, then we will just adjourn to the, to the board room or the other board room, I guess, unless we can clear this place. I don't know if we need to come back. We do have to come back to a public session, I don't know if it needs to be televised, since all we'll do is adjourn, unless someone has other business right now.
Can I ask for three-minute recess?
Yes, you may ask, there'll be a recess in between these two, so if that's the case, can, would anybody be willing to second my motion?
Seconded.
All right, it was seconded by Brenda. Any discussion? All those in, do we have to make this roll call? No, since we're all here. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we are in a non-public session, we will have a brief recess and then reconvene. Thanks, everybody.